Mr. Mr. Alan is good, Tim.
Sure.
Josh.
That's alright.
Where's Tim? Oh, that's Tim over there. Hi, Tim.
I know he's got a mask on.
I couldn't recognize him.
Paul doesn't recognize you with a mask on, Josh.
Yeah, Josh.
Wait a minute.
Yep. Getting younger. Next generation.
Probably a whole lot smaller today. Especially with that electronics on his lap.
Alright, you ready? Okay. We're gonna call the meeting in order. Could everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good? Alright, our first is Mike Beal. Morning, Mike.
Oh, yes. Yes, please. The very beginning has your budget hearings. If you notice it when it crosses from mic, it'll say what department he's from and what page you need to go to. They're also tabbed. And he does not have, unless you see an N sub town, but if the department didn't give me extra information, is behind your budget. In the book.
You mean per department?
Per department.
That's all I have.
What's going around now is our budget worksheet, just in a simpler. Dollars give for every dollar he gives for our budget. We're getting thirty-four dollars back out of federal money, different consideration around counties. I'm just out there doing what it is. In the break things.
Any emerging thoughts, Mike, for?
No, I don't know. The only thing we got going on right now is copier. It's been like two months where they haven't been fixed some maintenance. But every year, every time we bought a copier, we bought it ourselves. Our things.
Very good. Any question? Everybody good? Appreciate you being here, Mike. Be safe.
Jeffy has something to present since we're kind of running out of time.
Yeah.
I want to take my own. You know, it's easy to do this. This is your statutory duty of non-binding review. Two of those. To Josh. Actually, three was one of them. Um.
Thanks, Doc.
It's your obligation to review the levies and circuit breakers of all of the non-binding. I said that.
Okay. Keep it a great. I'm sorry. I'm so glad it's gracious.
Um, of all the non-binding units out there, ones that you really have no say in, but you're supposed to review their levy and their circuit breakers. There's no penalty for doing this as of 2016, but it is statutory, so I want to bring it to you. What you're looking at here is, in the first two columns are the current certified levies from the abstract for each of those units. And then the estimated levy is, is four point two growth. No, it's the same levy because your growth is in, in levy freeze money. So those two are the same. Again, the circuit breakers will stay pretty much the same unless you have a huge drop in assessed value because your growth comes from the levy freeze. So your rates will stay pretty stagnant, if not going down. But what I need you to do is review these, have it in your minutes, and instruct your county auditor to either send a copy of those minutes or a copy of this document to each of these units. And the levy growth, as you heard, was four point two this year. So that, that will grow in your income.
Doc, please. Tag that on me, Jennifer, tomorrow. So we'll just go ahead.
It has to be in your first official meeting, which is your official meeting. So it has to be today. At some point in time, it just needs to be in the minutes that you review. There'll be minutes on this, just short and brief. Yeah.
How did we advertise this? Do we advertise this as a meeting?
Whenever you notice, whenever you notice anybody, it's an official meeting. Why we need to get it in minutes today. There's no penalty for not doing this, but it's statutory, and so I like it to be in here.
So what, what is your request, Jeffy?
I'm requesting that you instruct the auditor to send a copy of this worksheet, and I'll give it to her in Excel so she can mail it out to all of the non-binding units and state that you reviewed.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Paul Ryder.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Scott Ayers. Is there any discussion on the election on the floor? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both, same side? Motion carried.
The last thing I'm going to give you, just, we don't need to discuss it now necessarily, is the information that I provide to you. This is our first draft of where we are in the levy and where we are in the funds with the balance as of next year. What the thing we want to think about as we're budgeting this year is our income taxes should remain stagnant this year. There shouldn't be a problem with our income taxes for 2021. However, in 2022, there's an anticipated ten percent drop due to the pandemic. So what we're doing this year, we kind of need to look at 2022 and save a little bit in reserve to, to compensate for that huge drop.
Ten percent, right?
Ten percent is what's estimated. Obviously, we'll watch as the numbers come in and, and see that. We'll know more when we get into it. But we want to anticipate that there's going to be a drop in those estimated revenues. And if you have any further questions, we can talk about this when there's another break. Because I'm watching. But these are those two documents that I gave you. This, here's a snapshot picture of this thing in hold.
Yeah? Very good. Alright. Next department head is Judge Deener. And Judge Mr. Shagley?
Yes, Mr. Shagley is here to discuss some of the probation matters, adult probation, juvenile probation, et cetera. Good morning to the council, Judge Benjamin Deener. Enjoying my eighth year in the current capacity. The budget is for ninth year in this capacity. Individuals perceive time differently. It feels like I've been before you about a hundred times, and it seems like I was last year about five minutes ago. So I have been told by my trusted advisors, it's been over a year, which is shocking to me, but here we are. I don't really have any specific requests this year. You'll notice my request for my reporters is significantly higher than what was allocated last year and what will be allocated this year, I'm confident. This is not a real request. This is me signaling to you how underpaid my employees are. And eventually, three, four, or five years from now, I'm either going to need to hire new employees or retain my current employees. And I think that's going to be close to what they're going to get paid. My request last year was that the council allocate my court money for staff and let the court allocate it. I know that that's not permissible with county offices. I think if you put it on the low priority for the next two, three, four years to review, you may find that it's permissible with courts. I don't know. That would be my preference, is to give me a budget. It could even be smaller than my current budget, and I can spend it on staff, how I choose to spend it on my staff. As far as next year, I told my staff, don't expect a raise. Be glad that the lights are on, be glad you're employed. It's, there's probably not going to be money. And so that's my expectation. If there is money for any cost of living raise or anything of that nature, my request would be just that my employees share in that increase as other county employees may. But frankly, this year's been very difficult for everyone. I can't even imagine how difficult it will be for you all to keep the county physically sound. And so it's certainly not my expectation for our budget to grow next year. As long as we can essentially function and keep the lights on, we'll be satisfied until we can get through this pandemic, which as far as I can tell, is known in sight. So if there are questions, I will try to answer them. And if there are no questions, I will allow you all to proceed with Mr. Shagley regarding his requests for the portions of the budget that has been delegated to him as the chief probation officer.
Yeah, Doc.
Judge, I'm sorry. I got
Yeah, hear me?
lost a little bit on the four or five years down the road.
Uh, this is just my gut instinct. I've got an employee that's nearing retirement, so that employee may retire. And I know that budgets aren't employee specific, they're job specific. But the facts that pertain to my employee is that the employee may retire at some point. I keep encouraging that not to happen, but if I was near retirement age, I would probably retire. And so the, the truth is, I'll have to hire a chief court reporter at some point or make it more viable to retain my current employees, which would be my preference. Frankly, this type of job has been, I've been able to retain quality employees because of flexibility with using their vacation time, time off that is permitted by the county. We emphasize our schedule to accommodate those requests. And so typically, my staff with young children, if they want to go to school functions or things, we accommodate that. Whereas if you're working a Subaru or other jobs in the area, you're either there or you're not. And you're fired if you're not there after you miss too many times. And so that remains constant, that will always remain constant, unless our case load just goes through the roof, which is kind of happening. But
I understand that.
Right.
You're just, we need to plan that
You don't need to.
in the future.
You don't need to. I'm, I'm encouraging that it's considered that court staff, especially compared to surrounding county's court staff, is underpaid. And I understand they're government employees, and the purpose of government employment is not to get rich. That being said, to function at an appropriate level, I do believe at some point, court staff wages may need to improve. Rather than coming and telling you that this year, they have to get more money, period. I'm trying to give you plenty of time to plan and see if that's something that's even possible, knowing that it's not possible this year, next year. I'm giving this pandemic
Thank you.
three years
I understand.
to get back to level of minimum. I mean, I'm a believer of COVID. I'm a believer in that we're not anywhere near the end of it because of our own actions and enactions. But I'm not trying to get political about that. I'm just trying to signal to you guys that at some point, this may be a more real discussion. Right now, it's a hypothetical discussion of, I think in the future, we may need more funds for staff. And with that being said, I would prefer to be able to hire one employee, two employees, or three employees, given the money that you give me. I'd rather handle it that way than you telling me I have to pay this type of employee this much money. Because I think we could be, I think we could hire quality applicants, run more efficiently if we use whatever resources we have perhaps more effectively. Not that we're not effectively using it now, but
So they go from three to two, or maybe?
I don't know if that's a long-term solution, but I, it's, it's unclear. Because with e-filing, we've had that for a handful of years now. It's shifted job responsibilities and it's shifted workload. But we're seeing, as you may be aware, our superior court judge retired in July. We've got a new judge, and it's not going to be a long-term issue, but it does create exponentially more administrative work right now. And I won't bog you down with the details, but it's just things that aren't difficult to do have to go to four or five people, they have to do something with it. And it just takes a lot longer than it would on a normal day. And that will find its level once we get through this initial blood. But it's still a fact of the business that I put a hundred things over lunch yesterday in my Bayless queue. That's the first time I've put anything in a queue for years because normally, things just get there in the normal course of work. But right now, they're just a specific type of task that needs to be done that wouldn't have ever been done before. And it's not difficult, but even things that aren't difficult, if you have to do them a hundred or a thousand times, that can take up a lot, or most of a day or week. But that's a very short-term problem. Not a short-term situation.
Judge, last year, we discussed kind of a restructuring of the, of the workflow. And at, at the time, Judge Fouts was not, I, I think it's fair to characterize it, didn't share your view of, of, for his court. But, but one of the, one of the recommendations that you had made is maybe having a person that would service both courts. Am I recalling that?
I can't recall specifically. I remember giving a couple options as far as how the council could allocate money or how the offices could function. Those were kind of examples, some of which I was not serious about, some of which I was serious about, but they were all options. I didn't hear what his proposals were last year. The, the nature of the two courts are quite different. Superior Court, high-volume court, and that's not a joke. I mean, it's fractions. It's things that, I don't want to speak out of turn, but it's things that if you're doing them wrong, it doesn't really matter. If you're doing them right, it takes longer. But they still need done. And so just the traffic infractions, the misdemeanor, all of those things. I don't know how scriptbook staffing manages the staff objectively before I was on the bench. And that was the previous regime. It seemed poor then, and it seems to remain poor if you're using the courts. You go there, it's getting better. But it used to be, you go there, you have a hearing, you get the order. Forty-five, sixty days later, you go, I forgot about it, I even did that. And those are things that should be getting out faster. And I think each judge has made steps to improve that. But it's not, I'm not saying anybody's doing anything bad or wrong over there. It's just that we have so much each day, you know, eighty hearings. Those orders may not get out the next day because you've got limited staff. And if the staff is not maximizing their efficiency, then things can get behind. And circuit court, everyone's cross-trained, and everyone helps each other out. If someone's gone, the other person does their work without question or squabble. Like, I don't know how the Superior Court has functioned historically, or how it's going to function moving forward. That's not really of my concern. But as far as that, if, if, if that's something, if, if, after reviewing the budgets, if the council determines that there's a need that can serve both courts, I certainly would not have an issue with that. I don't know what that job description would look like. I know that the court employee is a little bit of a different status than a county employee. And so I just, I would just defer to the council to make sure that if that was a, a choice that was made, that it was just done appropriately with the proper job descriptions, et cetera. But I wouldn't have an issue with that. I don't envision Judge Hopkins and I having any material disagreements. It would, it could potentially become an issue if you've got two bosses co-equal with one employee. And maybe I disagree with how that employee's performing, and the other judge strongly agrees. And then we've got a job function and a job retention issue where I may think that's no longer appropriate, that, or vice versa. You know, whenever you have two bosses with no boss having a priority, that can be an issue. So that would be the only potential caveat that I could foresee being an issue having a dual employee in both courts. But if that was an appropriate solution, I, I would certainly try it out.
Yeah, I would just encourage, you know, given that Judge Hopkins is new, and I'm sure looking at everything, you know, with fresh eyes, this might be an appropriate time to, to just look at, at everything and see, you know, where there's opportunities for efficiencies.
And I've heard, I've heard rumor that some of his staff may be retiring or leaving. I've not officially heard anything. And I've communicated to him that as far as calendaring and things, it was my recommendation that he sit on the bench for a while, hear the cases, figure out what types of cases he likes to hear when. Because ever since I've been on the bench, we've tried to make our calendar as efficient as possible, knowing that there's only three or four attorneys that serve White County, Carroll County, Tewa County, Clinton County. And so I can't act as if this is when my hearing is, you have to be here right now because the people that serve my court can't always control their calendar. And so bringing back to the point as far as efficiencies, other courts aren't as kind, and then they change their calendar. And so things that became efficient our court then are once again inefficient because people have changed their calendar, not being conscientious of ours here. And so until he's able to manage his own dossier for a while, I don't think it's a fair recommendation to come up with that type of calendar until you know really what your preferences are. Because, you know, small claims may not be that difficult, but you don't want to do small claims all day, every day. It's just not something that you want to do. So you have to figure out when you need to satisfy the need for those cases to be heard as quickly as possible without burning out yourself or your employees.
Well, I just want to say for the record, I appreciate you thinking about this and, and trying to come up with unique solutions, so.
Well, with all, I mean, I can't imagine how difficult it's going to be for all. Like I said, it truly feels like I was just here this year doing this, and it was not this year. And so you're hearing this from every department head, and I envision the finances are going to be very tight this year. The main issue, not issue, the main area that was, I think, of a substantive decision last year was the council instructed the courts to continue participating in the public defender council. I don't have the total figures because we're in the middle of the year. I'm assuming that the extra amount we're paying, the hourly rate of public defenders will be exceeded by the reimbursement we get. And that's just something I would encourage the counter, counsel to monitor. Because if that's not the case, then we certainly don't need to be doing all of the administrative paperwork to remain in the public defenders council if it's not financially leveraged to us. But so far, it has been, and I believe it may continue to be. And we are continuing to remain compliant with the council, although they've had some grievances with us because like anything, governmental administration change, policies change, interpretations of neutral language change. And so things that used to be permitted here in Carroll County as far as workload and things, they've started to crack down on more. And so they're sending us notices that such and such attorney has too many cases. And so then we can't appoint that attorney for a while, and it's, we try to remain compliant with all of his requests.
Are you sure, public defenders?
Um, yes and no. I think if you, if you're able to just identify all the locally licensed attorneys, there's just not many. And of those locally licensed attorneys, not all practice criminal law. And so we've not had an issue yet, but if you're aware or unaware, Judge Merzak's, you know, retiring in White County. So an attorney's ascending to the bench there. So then that's one more attorney that's not practicing in the field. And same with the prosecuting attorney, Mr. Guy is retiring. So then there's going to be another attorney that takes that office, is no longer practicing in the field. And so we go from having five to six practicing attorneys to four or five. And I'm sure there'll be people similarly situated to this generation of folks that seize the opportunity and moves in and hangs a shingle and services that demand. But you've seen in all facets of our community, we don't always get local people back home forever. And so the other option is people that aren't local to this community coming in. And that's great if they see opportunity here, but that's kind of not always been referred by the county. The county prefers to take care of county people when county funds are used, and I understand that, and I appreciate that.
Anything else for the judge?
You truly have a difficult job, more so this year than any. It's never an easy job, but God bless you with the pandemic and the resources. Hopefully, you can make it work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
Justice?
Am I okay to remove my mask? Do you want to hear the buffalo?
Sure.
I guess my name's Justin Shagley. Most of you already know that, but I'm the chief probation officer at the probation department. I've entered into my twentieth year. And with that twentieth year, who could have predicted what we're going to face? Our office and the courthouse being closed, a new judge. Hits kind of just keep coming. But as, as we completed this budget and we tried to predict what would happen in 2021, we did our best. Just to give you an update, we, even with the pandemic, we do continue to collect fees. As of July 31st, we've collected a hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. Majority of that money is honestly coming from income detention. Some of the reason behind the increase would be that we've released some people from the jail and placed them on income detention due to the pandemic.
How much is that at?
I mean, it, honestly, it's, it's up. I, I tried to look back, I think I had in June, we're probably up about maybe ten thousand dollars. It won't have hurt there. But those fees support the supplemental adult and the supplemental juvenile budgets. I just want to point out, we're, we're getting to the point, you know, we've kind of watched this. I, I was appointed chief in 2003. That supplemental adult budget, we took a big hit last year. If you remember, we had some cuts, what we requested, we didn't receive. We're getting to the point where we may face an issue where that, that money, those monies will not sustain the office. I, it's hard to predict where that's going to be, but it's probably coming down the road. Now, I've, I've been here, I'll be twenty-one years next year, most of the time I'll be twenty, and Karen, I think we'll be fourteen years. So we're, we're getting some service. Also, last year, the items that were reduced, there will be a request for additional appropriations or transfers specifically in this. or transfers, specifically in the supplies received ledger books, that's mainly our carbon copy receipts. When we're collecting payments, sometimes we have to enter this and not have to copy. Home detention provider, that was decreased. We're going to not have enough money in that line item to make it to the end of the year, especially with the increase, you know, figures that we have on, on that program now. And also our telephone and internet, we reimburse each officer every six months, we reimburse a monthly amount, we're going to have enough to pay that at the end of the year. I guess, just real quick, if I could give you a couple goals for 2021, we're really working to cut paperless. We have, I think we have 22 four-door file cabinets up in our office, they take up a lot of space, as you can imagine, we have four down the basement with juvenile files. We're working on scanning all those files. Our administrative assistant, Amy Stevens, completed the Ls, so she's got all the way through the adult files, so we're halfway through the adult cabinets. We do have a drive backup of the additional money that I've added in the juvenile supplemental. I would like to be able to pay for an off-site cloud-based backup system so that we don't lose that. I've had a heart attack when I had the electrical issue here of the courthouse, we like, oh, she just got the Ls, we lost all that. So we definitely have that backed up, and so that's some of the addition software costs.
Justice, did you?
We did not. We were having issues connecting to the drive for a while, but it's a phrase of Lord we got there. So, yeah, I know, shoot, especially. Also, I wanted to concentrate on more remote operations. Right now, we have one tablet which shares between three officers. Honestly, if we're going to do paperless, we're not going to have their files, we're going to need those tablet devices to go and get the court, take them home to be able to access the system. With, with the Odyssey, that can't be put on a machine unless it's counted, that's on probation program. So I've added in the equipment costs on the juvenile, so that as juvenile officer, I would be able to, be able to purchase one, and then also, we need one more for the adults.
Could you purchase a laptop right now and say because of COVID, you can't, you can't use the same laptop, and then you're reimbursed in the CARES Act?
I don't know what we're running into, because I've come short on money just to be able to.
I understand, but CARES Act reimburses 100%. So if you say you're buying them because your officers can't use the same laptop because of COVID, it is reimbursable under the CARES Act, and the money gets around in about 14 days.
Yeah, I'm trying to disagree with you about the document scanning, just anecdotally, I have friends that practice privately as well, and law firms are going through this as well, trying to scan all the documents because it's just not feasible to store all this old documents. And privately, firms are charging tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars to scan these documents, and it's not for the whole thing, it's saying, we'll scan this cabinet for $10,000. And it sounds crazy until you actually go through and try to do it yourself, and it takes forever, so the fact that his staff is doing that is, they don't need to applaud it, but if, if we just, if we came to you and said, we need this to happen, it would be extremely expensive. And so if employees are able to do that on-job and maintain their other functions, I think that should be encouraged because that is a nightmare, getting down that road, trying to scan things in. And so I just wanted to bolster that as a, as a good thing that's happening.
I guess that's all I had, are there any questions?
All of them out to the, to the council?
You mentioned tablets, and you've already purchased those yet this year, and you can vouch for reimbursement. Would you say that those were for the adult probation with juveniles?
Well, we only, we have one, and we purchased the adult, we don't have any for juvenile. They're probably on line item to do that for juvenile.
Just to bring that up about the CARES Act, Mike and I have been talking to some of the officials that already have bought the circus probes and asked for their claims, talks of their claims to get reimbursed for that. So that would be the same as what they would be doing, so we are aware of that.
And is there any information that we could pass on the department has as far as things that should be looked into, such as that? We did, I accept it certainly because I'm aware that there's grant money, I'm aware that there's reimbursement, but.
There's 100% reimbursement.
Sure.
We just haven't got to that point where we know what we can.
Exactly.
What we can do, but you won't be getting information on that.
Good.
Just not tomorrow. And not next week.
Yeah.
Justin, hey, I appreciate it, that's a challenging job on a normal year, and this is ridiculous, so I appreciate your work.
Thank you, it's definitely been interesting.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
And I kind of, with the trust program, have you talked to, like, Nancy Ward, I've been collecting on the use of the trust program to help with these?
No.
It is a program that you're allowed to intercept income tax refunds for unpaid fees, and I believe she collected about $10,000 this year. So I'm the program manager on that, but Central Carroll County's already signed the agreement with the Association of Indian Counties in this matter of uploading files and pretty simple tasks, but these, you, like, the workflow is up there, use for probation and community corrections, so. And, and once the people know that their refund can go, kind of an incentive, a minimum pay in case of getting.
Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen.
It is 8:40, and we're on time, Dr. Dutter is not here, and we do have commissioners here, so. I said it's 8:40, and Dr. Dutter is not here, and Mr. Brown is not here, which is his after-hands, so we're just staying still for a little.
Five-minute reset?
Five-minute reset? I don't think we have a public reset. This would be an opportune time.
You said that they were still collecting home detention fees, right, for house arrest? That money goes back into the general fund? Is that correct? Or does that go directly to a different?
I believe it goes back to distribution.
He's got, he recognizes user free income, he recognizes user fee income?
Yeah, it's on the issue. Did Rain call you?
I've got it. You ready?
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Probably the easiest spot to start is 11:59, that's the one that is probably most important to you, the other are grant monies and what have you. Comment number one is the line item 1,000.01, the very first line item is incorrect. We did that before any board of health meeting and what have you, so I guess you can talk to Dr. Stoffer on that. Most of the increases are in salaries. This will go down to line item 2,000.14, we bumped that up a little bit, that's A to Z, that's mosquito stuff, mouse, rats, bedbugs, water samples. So she bumped that up a little bit. The next one, 2,000.41, is printing, we've done lots of signs and printing stuff for COVID stuff, so we had to increase that line item. Line item 3,000.05 is TB, we currently have a positive TB, it's latent TB, so, but nothing has came in bill-wise on that yet, so that will be depleted this year. The next page, the 3,000.24, the telephone pager stuff, we actually haven't had enough in that, we don't have enough in that account to pay this year's, so we had to increase that as well.
Which one is that?
The 3,000.24, telephone pagers.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
There's a new family downstairs, and they've shown some time they're resigning. It's, we need to take care of that one.
So that will go directly to the next person. So.
We're going to do some adjusting on that bill, then. So I'll talk to you about it.
3,000.64, rebinding of records. We actually don't rebind records, we put records in sleeves now, so we have to purchase those sleeves, and we've got to put those in go when we rebound or get glue on wording and what have you, that you can see, and so, and just doing purchasing sleeves that put pages in. The next line item, 3,000.70, is the refrigerator maintenance. I know some of that maintenance is due in January, and we've had to purchase new batteries. The state is now saying if you do not send us information to start with, your temperatures and what have you, then you're not going to be able to wear a vaccine. So the maintenance stuff is kind of going crazy. The hazardous property cleanup, the 3,000.95, this shows we use none out of that, we've been doing cleanup and mowing and what have you, she still does not have any bills for that. And that also includes if we have to do something with a building, so that line item looks like it hasn't been used, and in reality, it has been, or it's being used. And then the last one is the 5,000.01, the vehicle replacement, that went away last year, and so we're going to have to put some monies into that to replace the vehicle at some point. And I think that's all I've got. If you want to go to the 1206 fund, I know that doesn't really retain you much, but the big line item on that is the 2,000.42, the personal health, that's the vaccines and the flu vaccine and what have you that comes out of that number, so.
Dr. Dutter?
Yeah.
On the vehicle replacement, do you know where you're at in terms of lifespan of the vehicle that you're on?
So our vehicle is a, what year is it?
2012.
Yeah.
2013.
Yes, and how many miles did that last? Yeah, 50 or 60,000.
Is it 2012?
It's a 12, 12 purchased and 13, 13 purchased and.
What, what do you have on the last part of the, it's a 2012.
Yeah, it's a 12, I think it was purchased in the fall of 12, I think, so.
50,000 miles?
Yeah, 50 to 60.
Nick, last time they asked me about it, we had like 39,000 in the account.
Yeah, we had talked about it two or three years ago.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, too.
Correct, the other was the sheriff. Yes. I think that's all I have.
Any questions for Dr. Dutter? We'll thank you very much?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the job, people doing, you and your staff. Yep. We're losing one, and I think you probably here right now, so that's.